All of our productions at GCTV are sponsored in part by Bay State Health, providing the care you and your family need, when you need it, close to home. Visit them online at baystatehealth.org. Greenfield Savings Bank, visit them at 400 Main Street in Greenfield. Call them at 774-3191, or go online to greenfieldsavings.com. Greenfield Community College, providing access and excellence in higher education in the Pioneer Valley. Visit them at gcc.mass.edu. The Hammond Family, the Hammond Family are longtime supporters of Greenfield Community Television. New Fortune Chinese Restaurant, on the Mohawk Trail in Greenfield. Visit them online at newfortunema.com, call them at 772-0838, and check them out on Facebook. Real Cleaning Services, cleaning Hampshire and Franklin County since 1972. We don't cut corners, we clean them. Check them out online at realclean.com, call them at 413-422-1143. Peoples United Bank, located at 45 Federal Street in Greenfield. You can call them at 774-3713, or visit them online at peoples.com. The Solar Store of Greenfield, replacing fossil fuels and nuclear power, one home at a time. Visit them at 23 Fisk Ave., call them at 413-772-3122, or visit them online at solarestorofgreenfield.com. Thank you to our sponsors for supporting all of GCTV's productions.
Speech can contribute wonderfully to the free exchange of ideas, or speech can shut down that exchange altogether. Hate speech in particular cannot become acceptable under the cloak or pretext of the free exchange of differing points of view. Not at official meetings of our town bodies, and not in our town. When speech is used to denigrate people who are the frequent and historical targets of such speech, and of the violence this speech can incite, it does nothing to further mutual understanding or civil discourse. It serves to silence and to marginalize. While it may be protected, or legal, biased speech, including hate speech, serves only to instill terror in the hearts of those who hear it. And to allow it to go unchecked, only serves to instill confidence in those who dish it. That understanding is what it means to say "not in our town." There's a reason hate speech isn't legal in Germany. And it's our obligation to interrupt it here. Interruption is also legal. Town meetings must be no place for hate. If Greenfield ever has any hope of declaring itself no place for hate. Safe does not mean comfortable, but it does mean we must protect one another from harm. Not in our town is a movement to stop hate, address bullying, and build safe, inclusive communities. Toward that end, we give you our pledge, and I give you Holly. Holly Kasiski, 85 Maple Street. So we are coming here from "Not in Our Town" to invite the council and anyone else present who wishes to sign this dignity and civility pledge that we're bringing before you today. As a member of the Green-- I'm gonna read that pledge now. "As a member of the Greenfield community, I acknowledge that bias incidents and acts of hate destroy the fabric of our community, threaten the personal and collective safety of residents and visitors to our city, and can escalate into criminal activity. I pledge to support the human dignity of every person and a civil Greenfield by refraining from disparaging other people based on who they are and by attending to those who are the targets of such acts. I join this community effort to neutralize bigotry and support people who are marginalized and disenfranchised." So we're asking, as I said, the council to sign the pledge, to help promote it, and anyone else to join us. We have already gathered over 150 signatures in the first week that we've had this out, and we'd like to continue to encourage us to come together as a community against hate and in favor of supporting each other. Thank you.
Thank you, and if you bring that up here, I'll be the first to sign and I'll pass it around. But you're walking away with it. Oh, okay, there it is. I thought it was the green sheet. Thank you. Oh, that's just a handout, okay. Suzanne Worgastic.
Thank you, my name is Susan Worgastic. I live at 45 Forest Avenue. I'm here to talk about two things. The first one is, I want to thank the council for taking a very proactive stand around the whole issue of negotiations around the nursing situation at Bay State Franklin. Personally, as a two-time cancer survivor who's had great care there, I-- from the nurses in particular, I really believe that we need to have adequate and appropriate nursing staffing, and I hope that your involvement can make a difference in terms of bringing this to a close before we have to have another strike. I think that that's unnecessary, and I'm hoping that you will be able to help the negotiation. So I appreciate that, and I want to thank you for that. The second thing is around the DPW. We have great service from our DPW in terms of trash collection. It really is, whenever there's a problem, they resolve it right away. It seems to me-- I'm going to go to the thing tomorrow, but it just seems to me that the issues around adequately funding the department to be able to do its job is something that we need to come to you about. And I would hope that within the budget that you're working on, you can find the money to be able to supply them with the trucks and whatever other equipment they need, so that they continue to do the job that they do, because they do a great job. And I think that having that as a service that we own, we control as a community, is essential. So I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Susan. Hazel Dawkins?
Good evening, I'm Hazel Dawkins. I live in Greenfield at 91 Smith Street. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Like many residents, I'm concerned about the situation at Bay State Franklin Medical Center. It's hard to believe that Bay State declined to have Jim McGovern help open negotiations. It's just as hard to believe that Bay State is refusing to negotiate a fair contract. It was an eye-opener to see the full-page ad in the newspaper, the Recorder. Among other points, the heading, "The Value of Quality Is Below 13%." That's astounding. And it's because the nurses are overworked. There are not enough nurses. Why aren't there enough nurses? Bay State is not hiring sufficient staff. This is of great concern to people going to the hospital. Over the last five years, Bay State has made a profit of more than $207 million, according to the Center for Health Information Analysis. In 2016 alone, they posted a profit of $47.2 million. That's a margin of 9.7%, which is more than three times the state and regional average of 3%. Would a modest part of that be enough to help cover the cost of hiring enough nurses? That's a question for us to ponder. Thank you.
Thank you. Arminay Margosian?
That's very good.
Thank you.
I usually know when there's a hesitation to come to my name. So my name is Arminay Margosian, and I live at 186 Petty Plain Road. And I'm very concerned about Wisdom Way, and the condition of Wisdom Way. It is appalling. I'm so afraid that somebody's going to be hurt. You know, it could become a tragic situation, and then the town-- this brings up the town's liability. But I don't want to see anybody get hurt. And people, when they're coming from, I believe that's River Road, and when they're coming onto Wisdom Way, they drive up the hill on the opposite side of the road because of the pitch of the receding road that's just falling away. And this situation that's at the bottom of Wisdom Way is eroding with those potholes. I don't know if they're potholes, or if those are sinkholes. But it's like a completely scary situation over there. And I know that I read in the paper back in, I think it may have been 2009, 2010, that by 2016, that road was going to be fixed. Well, we're in 2018, and nothing has been done. Even the concrete barriers--
Thank you.
--are sliding off the road. It's-- I'm just afraid, because people walk up that road, and if something should happen-- especially we're getting to like the springtime, and there's gonna be a lot of thawing, and people are walking up the hill. And I remember what happened at the other ends. I know that that was different with the mudslide, but I'm just afraid that these things are kind of brewing, and I'm watching it happen right before my eyes, and I just don't like what I see. And I just don't want to see anyone in our town, or not in our town, like anybody being hurt. So let's try to prevent a tragedy from occurring. I don't know what can be done in the meantime to ameliorate the situation until that road is fixed, but something's gotta get done. All right? Thank you.
Ted Hinman?
Can I add one other thing? I just want to mention that I'm not criticizing the DPW for this, because they've done an amazing job, and they're very-- I mean, they're wonderful. Like, I-- they're always-- I always see them working really hard. So this is no criticism of the DPW, just so that there's no misunderstanding.
Well, I'm Ted Hinman, I'm Arminay's husband, and we both live up on 186 Petty Plain Road. And I'm echoing the same concern. It's like, what's it gonna take for them to fix that? Are they gonna wait? Are they gonna look for proof? And the proof is gonna be that the road collapses, and somebody gets killed, or somebody's house gets caved in? Is that what they need for the proof? I think if that happens, then it would be a disgrace. And you gotta address it. And if you put it off, it's gonna be too late. Can't be playing games with people's lives or people's property. And same thing like that other area where the landslide was, people's yards and property got ruined. And it could have destroyed some homes, too. And then what are they gonna do? They could be homeless as a result of it, if it was even worse. So we gotta get on that. And I know Arminay has done a great job getting the point across. I'm just echoing it.
Thank you. Sandra Boston?
Sandra Boston, 15 Abbott Street. I have four things I want to remark on. The first is, I really want to endorse the nomination for Sarah Ahrens for Human Rights Commission. I've known Sarah for a couple of years, and she's very dedicated, dynamic, focused, and determined to end the stigma around any kind of drug-related issues, and also to save lives. She's gone around teaching people how to use Narcan, and she's gone to testify in Boston and in Atlanta, Georgia. She's recognized statewide and nationally as a leader in turning the opiate crisis around. So we're very lucky to have her in our community, and I hope that you will vote her in on our Human Rights Commission. Secondly, I want to thank you for going down to Springfield today and witnessing. I'd like to know what our community can do more in terms of getting their attention than just standing out on a strike with the nurses. I find this just intolerable, that it's been going on for over a year, and there's no movement of any kind. And they're dealing with this with their other hospitals, too. And it just seems like we need something more than just a strike, or our town councilors going down and being locked out, as it were, in Springfield. So I'd like to, you know, get some more leadership going around what the whole community can do, because it's our hospital. It's not their hospital. It's our hospital. The second-- the third thing is just this idea of privatizing, and I will be coming tomorrow night. But my understanding is that when you privatize something, you forfeit your voice. You forfeit what terms you want to set for how things get done in our community. And we've got a high degree of accountability around renewable energy, and recycling, and taking good care of our environment as a community. And to simply hire private people and turn that over to them, to me, forfeits our own leadership around how we're taking care of our waste in our community. And I don't want to give up our voice. And I'm sorry that there's a financial crunch around the trucks, but it seems like that can be addressed, and that privatizing is a simple solution that I think would cost us much more in the end. So I'm against that. And finally, in the last budget you passed, there was $30,000 put aside to repair Poet's Seat Tower. Now, I walk by Poet's Seat Tower every morning, and I see the crumbling ridges, I see the concrete turning white between the bricks. This is our icon, you know that. And I know you put money in the budget to get it repaired, but is that money still there? $30,000, and is that repair gonna happen? Because some of us are ready to like take it into our own hands, you know? And just go fix it. So I hope you'll take responsibility for our icon. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandra. Ann Mayo?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Ann Mayo, 143 Wells Street, and I have brief comments on three subjects. First, I'm here to speak in opposition of privatizing Greenfield's trash services. My past experience with privatization has led me to believe that this would be a mistake. The town would have less control over the service, and also the loss of town jobs, even if through attrition, would not benefit the town. Second, please support the nurses of Bay State Franklin Medical during their upcoming strike. They're fighting for better patient care. I've heard people say, what, did they just want more money? No, they want the number of patients currently assigned per nurse brought down, because it's just unsafe at this point. So support the nurses, give everyone better patient care. And third, I also support the nomination of Sarah Ahrens.
Thank you, Ann. Sammy?
Hi. Hi, good evening, and thank you for this opportunity. I'm here tonight to actually support the nomination of Sarah Ahrens to become a member of the Human Rights Commission for the city of Greenfield. I-- oh, I forgot to say I'm from 15 Abbott Street. So I've known Sarah now for a couple of years. She-- first of all, she's from our city here for almost her entire life, like over 40 years. So she knows really the town very well. She knows the community well. She knows the issues very well. As Sandra was saying earlier on, I mean, she's very active at the state level, national level. She's well-recognized and respected. And she's just amazing how much, I mean, sometimes to the detriment of her own health, personal health, she actually goes out there and helps people. So I think we are very lucky to have her, and I would like to see her after the Human Rights Commission. Thank you.
Ginny? Disorga?
Hi there. Can you hear me? Okay. Ginny Disorga, 43 Silvercrest Lane. So I have three things that I wanted to talk about today. One was, tonight coming up before you is whether or not to adopt Silvercrest Lane. It's a public way, it happens to be where I live, and I'm hoping that you'll approve it. It was named-- it's a major street, serves 42 units, and it was designed so that the access, grading, and water, and sewer systems met all the applicable standards. And it's been approved, as you all know, by the Economic Development Council, the Planning Board, DPW, and the town engineer. So I think all-- they have a couple of housekeeping things to do in the spring, but other than that, I'm just-- there's many of our neighbors here tonight. I'm just speaking publicly that I'm hoping that you vote to approve it, firstly. Secondly, I understand that also on the agenda tonight, which I'm delighted about, you're having the formation of a split tax rate advisory committee. I think that's a wonderful idea. I'd like to say publicly, I'd be very interested in serving on that. I have great familiarity with the adjacent municipalities and their demographics, assessments, and tax rates, if I enchant you looking for anyone. And thirdly, I have grave concerns about that $529,000 and change being reassigned from the Hurricane Irene Relief Fund to the parking garage. Just listening to some of the things tonight of money that that could be used for, the sewer projects, safety issues on Wisdom Way, reduction of the debt borrowed for the school building, truck costs for DPW, so that people can continue. That seems to be a major theme, that people are wishing that their-- that our service continues from the DPW. There are many ways that that could be reassigned. Otherwise, it will go on to impact the tax rate, one way or another, because we will have to take care of the safety issues on Wisdom Way. I'm sure that money that's already been reassigned for Poet's Seat Tower, that's already spoken for. But there are certainly, just listening tonight, many other ways that that money could have gone. And the parking garage, at least 130,000 of it were things that are in just extra design features. Furthermore, I believe the number of spaces that we thought we were gonna get for it, for the town, is markedly reduced from what was promised in the initial plan. So at least Monday through Friday from 9 to 5, many, many more of them are for permit parking than was initially brought forward. So you'll make your best decision on that. And thank you for what you did today. All right, bye.
Thank you, Ginny. Would anybody else who has not signed up wish to come forward to speak? You may come forward. Just state your name and your address, please, for the record.
Carolyn, 20 Iris Court.
What's your last name?
Como.
Okay, thank you.
Sarah Ahrens should be added to the-- sorry. Human Rights-- thank you. Human Rights Commission. She's very active in the community, and she cares a lot about everyone. And she's always doing something for someone, politically, personally, just any way that she can. And she would be great because of how selfless she is, and how much she cares. And she puts in a great amount of effort all the time, and it really, really shows, and she gets the job done, so. Thank you.
Dawn Willette, DPW Director and resident of Greenfield.
Dawn, could you state your address, please?
52 New Oak Pond Road. The-- we'll start with the Poet's Seat, which is the easiest one. We did have $50,000 allocated. We went out to bid, and we got the bids back. They came in at the low bid was $55,000. You can only do that work in good weather. And the contractor felt he couldn't get it done in the fall, so we'll be starting that up in April. I do have a request into the council to cover the last $5,000. And I actually add, I'm asking for $10,000, so there'll be a $5,000 contingency there. But we do plan on starting sometimes in April, as soon as the weather is warmer. And you should see that request in March. Silvercrest, we have approved Silvercrest, and we're in support of that. There's still some things that they have to do to buy by the permit, but we were happy with the way it's turned out, and we're ready to take it over as a regular street. And then Wisdom Way, the council and the mayor approved some money to have the design done. We are at the 25% design. It's a $4 million project. It's not a drop in the bucket, unfortunately. And it's-- right now, it is tip-eligible, but it's not on the tip. So in order for us to get that money from the state to repair the wall, to repair the entire roadway, we're probably still looking at four, maybe five years. We are trying to speed it up, very similar to what we did with Nash's Mill. But until it gets on the tip, I'm-- my hands are tied. But we do have the 25% design completed. Did I leave anything? Oh, we will get up there, do some patchwork on it as soon as the weather allows. Unfortunately, you can't put hut mix down when the plants aren't making it, and they're not starting that until next week. And even then, it's very suspect of whether we can get it. So it's probably more repair in April. But we are very focused on the intersection of River Street and Wisdom Way, because that's all chewed up at the bottom. It's almost as bad as Silver Street, so. Okay? Yes?
Oh, I thought you were-- you're not here as--
No, he's here.
I'm here as both. I'm-- so--
Officially, we're still in public comment?
Yep.
So you can ask questions when he comes back. It's Officer, yeah.
I'm coming back, okay. And I did want to put out that the meeting tomorrow night is a waste forum, and it'll talk about sledge disposal and solid waste. Thank you.
Dawn's just looking for extra time.
I'm honored.
Anybody else? Oh, David.
Good evening. David Moscaratol, 43 Country Club Road. Thank you. Yes, Dawn is correct. The town has worked hard to supply the residents with high-quality water and sewage systems. That's not the issue. The issue is how the increases have been communicated to the residents of Greenfield. In August of 2016, there was a press release. It talked about an increase of 3%. The Recorder was incorrect in its title. It was a 4% water increase and a 3% sewage increase. And it's very well explained the reasons for it. Rocky Mountain Tank, pumping stations, Lydon Road repairs. That's the type of information that the public wants and expects to get when they're told that there's going to be an increase. Today, we face a 10% and a 15% increase. Very little information was broadcast to the public. It was on the DPW website, but a lot of residents didn't hear about it until they got their bill in the mail, and saw the increase, and didn't even understand what it was for. The paper said that-- the quote was that it was only gonna be 9% a month to residents. So you can do the math, it comes out to about 3/4 of a million dollars. It had to be voted on that night. He had needed that money and the project, it would sound like it was going to come to a complete halt. And then a few days later in the paper, they interviewed the architect and they said it was for aesthetic purposes. So where's the huge emergency that we have to, in one meeting decide to give up the $529,000? If it's for aesthetic purposes, at the last meeting, we were told that the parking garage income is going to be $200,000 or $300,000. So use the income that we're going to make off the parking garage to maintain the parking garage and improve on the aesthetics of the parking garage. Makes sense to me. Take the $529,000, give it to Dawn and the DPW and lower the rate to a reasonable rate of 3 or 4%. That makes sense in my mind. I think that there's been some informational disconnect when it comes to projects and the residents of Greenfield deserve more information on where their money is going to be spent. Thank you council for your time.
Anyone else? Got to close the public comment and there is no public hearing tonight, so now we'll hear communications from the mayor, town officers and employees.
Good evening. I brought back Dawn. Dawn will go first. For those of you who, again, Dawn Willett, DPW Director. For those of you who have gone on the trolley rides, I have pointed out every one of the projects that needed to get done. I have stated unequivocally that your rates were 25% below what they should be. My first statement to you was 5% each year for the next five years. And it's unfortunate we didn't do that when I first got here. We waited and we waited. We finally put a 4 and a 3% rate increase in and we did it in January, not July, so we didn't get the full benefit of a full year of that rate increase. The simple fact is the town went something like seven years without a rate increase. During that time, we had increases in energy costs, we had labor increases, we had vehicle increases, fuel increases, and all of that got absorbed in the budget and also depleted our retained earnings. When we do a project like the water tank, all of that money doesn't get spent the year that we do the project. It gets bonded. That usually delays the actual hit on the financing for a year and a half before it actually starts hitting the retained earnings. That is what has happened. Leiden Road was a $1.4 million project that your first payment was in 2018, not 2016 when we did the work. So we're sitting in here, we're talking rate increases, and I actually remember the meeting. The mayor basically said, yeah, we're going to increase the rates by 5%. And I remember looking at him and saying, no sir, we need to increase the rates by 10 to 15%. When we sat down to do the budget this year and we were dealing with DOR to set the tax rate, DOR basically said, you've got a water and sewer fund that's losing money, it is not maintaining the budget. Therefore, in order for us to verify your tax rate, you're going to have to turn around and you're going to have to increase your rates. And they agreed to 10 and 15%. So we were held hostage, but we should have been. And, you know, I'm not going to mince words with it, it's, it is a fact. I have a copy of the water rate survey from Ty &amp; Bond that was just completed about two weeks ago. And it basically says, even with this water rate increase and even with the sewer rate increase, the town of Greenfield is still 25 to 35% lower than the rest of the state. I'm sorry, there's nothing magical, once you come into Greenfield, that allows you to turn around and keep your rates that artificially low. And I'm going to also turn around and say, when you do that, the only way you can do that is by not doing the preventive maintenance that you should have done. Those pumping stations should have been replaced 10 years ago, the three sewer pumping stations. We still have one of them to replace. When we pulled the tank out of the ground, it absolutely collapsed because it was that far gone. We could not get parts for it. We still have one at Leiden Woods and I'll be approaching you for that very shortly. You still have five miles of AC pipe in the ground. That's 30 years old. You're lucky if you get 20 years out of an AC pipe, but you have five miles of it. That's roughly a million dollars a mile, so that's a $5 million project that's sitting out there that needs to be done. So I'm sorry that I'm the one that has to be the guy that says you need to turn around and increase your water and sewer rates, but there is absolutely no way you can continue to go the direction you're going without having some kind of a disaster. And I use Flint, Michigan because all of the products that Flint, that happened in Flint are the same things that are happening here. Well, we can't afford it because if we do, if we raise the rates, we're going to end up making it really tough on poor people. We're going to do really this and that. And so instead of doing the right things, they took shortcuts. We're doing the same thing and that we have done the same thing. And so that is why you have to turn around and take a look at this. From a physical and from a realistic standpoint, you have still got an incredible water and sewer rate. And again, I'm going to be honest with you. As I said, it's 25%. Your water rate is going to have to go up 25% in the next year or so, or you're going to do absolutely nothing and wait for a disaster to happen. And then I'll be up here telling you, I hate to say it, but I told you so.
Does anybody have any questions for Vice President Ricketts and then Counselor Ellis?
I'm talking to Director Willett right now, right?
Yes, you are.
Okay. So about Wisdom Way, I wondered, the neighbors there were saying that everyone keeps going on the other side of the street intentionally because it's such a dip. I kind of understand that. So have you figured out a way that we can close that portion a little bit and put signage on each way, like to slow down because we know the cars are coming only one way?
We've actually set up a couple of test points out there, so we do have a survey crew that goes out about every two months and checks to see if there's any movement. As soon as we start seeing some movement, the intention is to close the road permanently until we get it repaired. You have Shelburne, yeah, Shelburne Road, right? Old Shelburne Road. You're in the same boat there. We have Jersey barriers that restricted down to one lane and then you got a 50-foot drop off. That road also is, is on the list to take a hard look at. And then that's a couple million dollar project as well. We're trying to get money for Wisdom Way. We're not certain how we can get money for Shelburne Road.
All right. So I get, I'll go back to my question again. Do you think that you could use the Jersey barriers now and put them up?
They're already there.
So it's, so no one ever has to drive on that side of the road when it gets to the...
No. No, we may turn around, make that a one-way or we may turn around and close it, but again, we are monitoring at this point. And again, we do have the design completed to 25%. And again, my hope is that this year we're able to get it on the tip.
Okay.
For those of you who don't know, the tip is the Transportation Improvement Program. It's the state money that funds projects such as Nash's Mill.
Okay. And as far as the water and sewer rates, it could have been emailed to me and I missed it, so I'll apologize in advance. But I guess when things go on the website, I don't actually flip through all the city websites. And so if there's like a way to give the council a heads up, because the way I know is when residents contact me. And I guess, which is something I just learned, is the bills don't go out at the same time, correct? They go out in seven different mailings?
No, we do, we do one-sixth of the town every, every month. So at the end of six months, we've done the entire town and then we'll start over and do one-sixth of the town and continue that way.
Is it just to get one-sixth of the complaints out of the way at a time?
No. Unfortunately, I'd love to be able to read on a monthly basis, but to do that, I'd have to hire about eight more people just to read meters.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Counselor Ellis?
At what point did both of you know that we were going to raise the rates so exorbitantly on the, on the rate payers?
When we talked with DOR. So it was on our, it's no question it was on ours, not getting it out earlier. We had talked and we had hoped to be able to get to July 1st and then do the rate increase then, but when we were talking with DOR, they said absolutely no.
What is, uh, sorry, I lost my train of thought here. I've got a lot of questions. When you do projects, you cannot spend more than the budget that we approved, is that correct, under the enterprise funds?
Uh, that's correct, it is.
So what, how much in deficit was the water fund and the sewer fund? Or how much was the projected deficit at the end of the fiscal year?
I actually don't believe we're in deficit yet, but I believe we will be by the end of the year.
And what are, what are we projecting it to be? The deficit?
Do you have an answer for that? The fiscal year 18 budget was $2.4 million on the sewer fund.
Yep. And $1.792 on the water.
Right. And the revenue on the sewer fund from last year was 2.1 million. So we couldn't, we couldn't prove that we can, we couldn't project that we can make the 2.4 up at the current rate we were at. So we needed to increase it to cover the voted budget.
Okay. So that left projected $330,000 deficit, projected. Projected, we did have some money still in retained earnings. Correct. 100,000 less than we would have had, but yes. So that leads me to my next question. We could have done a smaller increase by being a little bit smarter with where we spent retained earnings, is that correct? Of course. Of course. Okay. So the current retained earnings is, well, actually sewer retained earnings is $400,000 at this point, is that correct?
I believe it's in that neighborhood, yes.
Was that before or after the 100,000 that we spent on the built, the new DPW building that we're planning to build?
Again, I don't believe that's been charged to the 400,000 yet.
Okay. So there, if we didn't do that building, we would have 400,000. And the estimate for the water retained earnings would be $525,000.
I think that's high, but that's okay.
Oh, that's an estimate, yep. And there will be another 100,000 coming off of that, is that correct?
That's correct.
For that building. So I guess, I will, I will, the increase to the actual budget of the water budget from 2017 to 2018 was 3.6%, yet we're charging a 10% fee. And now we're hearing that next year it's going to go up another 15% for a total of 25%. So I'm a little baffled by that. And then the sewer budget only went up 0.4% year over year, but we're doing a 15% increase. And I think that I heard, and I could be wrong, on the 22 news segment that you did, that we would be raising that as well. But I could be wrong on that, so correct me if I'm wrong. So I guess my point that I'd like to, to say is, when we approved on this council the new DPW building for 300,000, of which 100 and 105 was coming from sewer and water or the vice versa, it was 205 total, split into two pieces. I, and I said it at the time, that's, we should not be spending that on that capital project. Because in my opinion, I felt we didn't need the building, but be that, set that aside and see that here we are now, a year later, or not even a year later, with a 25% increase. I, I, I have an issue with that. So I'll bring a point up under new business on that, but that's fine. Secondly, I am very discouraged when I hear things like, well, we're the lowest one. We, we don't, we don't charge enough. We don't, you know, we're 35% less than everyone else. Well, that's great. Okay? It is not a bad thing to be charging less than someone else. It's only a bad thing if the money is being dispersed in ways that could, could be done a little bit differently, which is, be that as it may as well, but I'm just, hearing that we don't charge as much as other people is not necessarily a bad thing. Because if you look at our median household income, you're going to find that it's below the middle of the entire state. So the people who live here and their equalized valuation of Greenfield can't afford huge increases like that. So we have to take the whole picture into account when we, when we look at what we're going to spend. I can guarantee everyone here, had I known that there was going to be a 10 and 15% increase, we would have looked differently at the capital budget and seen what else we could do to change things so that that could be mitigated over a time period. I'm not against changing rates. I'm not patently against changing rates. I don't like to change rates, but sometimes that has to happen and I understand that. It happened in 2017 where the waters, water fund rates went up 4% and the sewer rates went up 3%. So they have gone up before this. That, that is a fact. So anyway, in, a long story short, well, not really short, but I would hope that in the future, when you're going to increase rates, you need to tell people ahead of time or at least tell them the minute that you know or put it off a little bit. Because while, while I've heard you say you don't think we could have made it to June or July, I believe that we probably could have, given the amount of retained earnings that's there, specifically because if we hadn't spent those hundred, if we hadn't spent those 100,000 dollars out of each one, that was 30% of the deficit that was created by not raising the rates. So we really, we did, the same thing happened when, when the sewer department stopped taking care of the lines from the main to the house. We did that forever and at a meeting, all of a sudden, we find out that we don't do that anymore. And no resident knew that we didn't do that anymore because no one told them. So we need to be, we need to be able to get the information to the people that, that need to know it prior to it just showing up on their bill. Because we've had, I'm sure everyone, maybe not everyone else, but most other people have had their constituents calling going, what the heck happened to my bill? So please, in the future, I would, I would hope that if there's an increase, that we could do that increase and at least let people know so they can plan for it. They're, they're still going to be upset, they're still going to be mad, there's no getting around that. And your point is well taken. I'm sorry that it's you that has to be the one that tells us. So that's, that's, I'll, I'll stop. I do want to make a clarification though. We have spent $2 million in both in water and sewer over the last couple of years. Your payment for that work that we've done is now just becoming due and that's why the rate increase. And again, I did propose right up front, 5% a year, starting year one. Had we done that, you wouldn't have been, we wouldn't be in this situation. So the $100,000 on both of those accounts is... So, we need to be, we need to be able to get the information to the people that, that need to know it prior to it just showing up on their bill, because we've had, I'm sure everyone, maybe not everyone else, but most other people have had their constituents calling going, what the heck happened to my bill? So please, in the future, I would, I would hope that if there's an increase, that we could do that increase and at least let people know so they can plan for it. They're, they're still going to be upset, they're still going to be mad, there's no getting around that, and your point is well taken. I'm sorry that it's you that has to be the one that tells us.
One that does, right.
So, that's, that's, I'll, I'll stop, thank you.
I do want to make a clarification, though. Uh, we have spent two million dollars in both in water and sewer over the last couple of years. Your payment for that work that we've done is now just becoming due, and that's why the rate increase. And again, I did propose right up front, five percent a year, starting year one, had we done that, you wouldn't have been, we wouldn't be in this situation, so. Uh, the one-hundred thousand dollars on both of those accounts is five percent or three percent, or something like that? I mean, it's, it's minor in the big picture.
Councilor Ellis?
I guess that leads me to one more que, now that, now that you mentioned that, I have one more question. So, can we expect that next year, or actually this year for fiscal year two thousand nineteen, that the actual budgets of the, um, water and sewer enterprise funds will reflect more, or is this a problem of bringing in money? Is it, see, what I'm trying to figure out is if, if we spent all these years and the budget's never, never changed, but maybe the sewer budget changed about ten percent over the last five years to the upside, and the water fund changed not even ten percent to the upside, I guess I'm trying to figure out if we didn't, if we didn't have the money then, where did it come from, and if we don't have the money now, why not?
All, all I can tell you is that when you look at our revenue, it's been consistent, and if, if anything, it's actually going down. So people are using, um, water savages on their showers, they're putting new appliances in which use less water. Uh, you have no growth in this town, or at least nothing to speak of, and therefore your water consumption goes down. The only way we make or we bring in revenue is through the rate, and if the water consumption goes down, that's part of the rate, therefore we end up having a bigger gap, so.
So it's a revenue issue?
It's, it's a revenue issue.
Okay, that was, yeah.
Councilor Dolan?
I think, like everybody here, I'm concerned about the sewer and water rate increases.
Five-year gap.
Like most of us, I also heard about them from constituents, which is not the best way to go about that, in my opinion. Um, I would be curious, in terms of communicating with constituents, is it possible for you to break down how that extra revenue will be spent? So, what, I'm curious, what proportion of that is debt service, what proportion of that will fund future capital projects? Is anything going towards the, um, digester project? How much is just deferred maintenance? Like, I know you might not have that information today, but I would appreciate having that at some point, in order to have an intelligent conversation with constituents.
We can try to work out a, a point paper on that.
Okay, sure. Councilor Dolan?
Um, regarding Silvercrest, um, Silvercrest Way and Silvercrest Lane, am I getting that right? Silvercrest. Um, at the Economic Development Committee meeting, you told us that there was an agreement in place when those were constructed for the town to take over, uh, those as public ways.
I believe so, yes.
I looked back through my packet and I couldn't find any documentation of that agreement. Would you care to, um, elaborate on it?
I really can't, that's more of a planning board and a zoning function, but typically when you come in for a subdivision and you submit a subdivision plan, when you've met the regulations for the subdivision, at that point, it's assumed, as long as you've met everything, that you then can get accepted by the town once you get the vote.
So that's an assumption more than a formal agreement?
It is, yep.
Councilor Stumpel?
Sharing is caring, um, and I, I think just that, it's just the communications point, I think a lot of this could have been alleviated, thank you for asking for the point paper. Um, and so I think it, it was a breakdown of communication, and so I think, um, over-communicating is always better than under-communicating sometimes, so hopefully we can be educated a little bit more thoroughly on that. I, I knew about it, simply because I feel like I meet with the mayor and with Director Willett pretty frequently, um, but I wasn't aware that no one else was aware. Um, so that being said, communicate more or less, and as a communications professional, I'm happy to help.
Councilor Ellis?
I was just going to respond to Councilor Dolan on the taking of Silvercrest. If there is something actually in writing, I've never seen it, it's more of, uh, when they, when they go to create the sub, the, the, the development and subdivide, they're told that if they follow all of the steps, that we will assume responsibility, or they will ask for us to assume responsibility of the subdivision. In the almost twenty years I've been on the council, we've never not accepted one, because, unless there was a problem, but there hasn't ever been a problem.
Um, Mayor, um, I think, I think you're, um, Director Willett, I think you're done?
Okay.
Yes, thank you, good evening, Madam President and Councilors. I'm just going to speak briefly on, uh, three, three items. Uh, one is the parking garage, uh, the request for the five-hundred-and-twenty-nine thousand on the FEMA repurpose money. Um, the, uh, the funds would be used for a contingency fund, the current deficit of one-hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand dollars, and replace the contingency funds that are used a hundred percent at this point, and to replace, uh, alternative architectural, um, amenities that have been taken out of the project. So that would be the purpose. Um, if the council doesn't see fit to provide, uh, the five-hundred-and-twenty-nine thousand, and I know there are some strong feelings on the architectural, um, add-ons, then, um, we could do the two-hundred-and-fifty thousand if there was, uh, the council was inclined to amend and modify, and, uh, that would carry us through, uh, uh, a next session, um, that we would adopt, um, your recommendations for change orders in the future as they might occur, so that we would stay within the ten-million-dollar budget. Uh, so however you design that, uh, for the future. Uh, my second comment is, uh, regarding public safety, I know we've all been, um, been, um, just kind of shocked at what's going on around the country in different schools and districts, and sometimes just down the street. Um, I've, uh, I've had a preliminary meeting with our public safety, uh, we've had a, a early discussion, um, the, um, I've requested the, uh, Chief of Police to prepare a, um, a supplemental plan that would increase our school resource officers by a hundred percent, maybe two-hundred percent, depending on how you look at that. Um, they won't be stationed fixed in schools, but to be roving in schools. Um, so that proposal will be, uh, be before me next week. Um, the public safety is also meeting with the superintendent in the morning and others to, um, to clarify and re-verify our protocols and, and, uh, any type of, uh, improvements or modifications that might be needed immediately. I can say that, um, everything has been followed according to the plan, uh, according to our emergency preparedness, there have been, um, some, some issues here and there, and the superintendent and or the Chief of Police will bring them out at various times to, uh, the council and the public. And lastly, um, we often talk about money and we often talk about debt. Um, the, the good side is that, uh, even though you give us a lot of money over the period of a year, you know, just around sixty million in the operating budget and the water and sewer enterprise funds, um, you give us other monies in the form of capital and some stabilization funds. We have, uh, we have this evening, um, asked to, uh, allow us to return forty-eight million dollars in the form of rescission. That is not debt, that is borrowing authority, so we're returning that borrowing authority, that line of credit, if you will, back to the council. Um, some, some percentages to keep aware of, it's kind of our financial best practice plan, uh, accepted by Department of Revenue, um, but also a good, um, a good parameter to work with, is that, um, our debt line item in the budget, um, we like to keep between five and ten percent of the operating budget, so that's roughly, uh, three to six million dollars in that line item. Uh, our debt, our, um, borrowing should be between five and ten percent of the equalized valuation, so our equalized valuation is one-point-four billion now in Greenfield, so five to ten percent of that is roughly, uh, seventy to one-hundred-and-forty million, so that's the borrowing, and then we have the debt payment on the line item in the, in the operating budget. So whenever you wonder if we're in debt, we're going bankrupt, we're insolvent, or how well we're doing, you can look within those parameters, in your line item in the budget, or in the, um, in the total debt that we have in, uh, borrowing. So I'll take any questions.
Councilor Byford? I speak for, uh, constituents, but actually, um, actually a couple of them have called. Hello? Can you hear? Oh, oh, okay. Um, one, one gentleman called earlier, um, just before I was on my, way out the door, and I didn't get a chance to call him back, but he, uh, had left a message and wants answers about the water and sewer bill. He wants to know what the heck the town is doing, spending money. His tax rate is currently high enough, and explain the financial trouble that we're in, so can you respond to his?
So are those three questions, or just that?
That, that was, that was his.
Okay, so, um, what, given the first question, why do we have water and sewer rates?
He's saying about the water and sewer bill, what the heck is the town doing, spending money? Um, and his tax rate is presently high to explain the financial trouble.
Yeah, um, so our, I think Don explained the tax, uh, or rather the water and sewer pretty, uh, coherently. Um, what he didn't mention is from, uh, and maybe I take the blame for that, uh, during my first eight years of, uh, mayor, I did not increase water and sewer, uh, fees a penny, so we kept it the same. My rationale is that we had, uh, high retained earnings, and I didn't see it, uh, proper to continue to increase the, uh, rates of water and sewer when we had, uh, close to one-point-two million dollars in retained earnings. We spent that down, obviously, over a period of, uh, those years, and then when, um, when the DPW director had some, uh, very aggressive, uh, repair plans, then that's when we came up before, um, uh, before the council to do the capital, and then we did the, obviously, the, uh, increase recently. Uh, again, I'll share, and I, I won't take full credit, but I'll share it with Don for, uh, not communicating very well, and that it should have, uh, it should have gone out sooner. Um, we did have a miscommunication within the town hall, um, while the, um, media release was being prepared, the bills were sent out. Um, that was a mistake in the House, because the media release was to go out first before the bills. So, uh, the first couple of weeks, then, uh, it was, people were shocked because they weren't notified. Um, the tax, let's go, the excessive spending, is that what, uh, he's called?
Yeah, what, what the heck is this town doing, spending?
What the heck is the town doing?
Spending money, yes.
Yeah, the town spends money. Um, we spend money because we provide services and programs, and we also have six-hundred-plus employees, so, um, to continue to, uh, maintain the quality of life that we expect in Greenfield, and to maintain everything from parks to, uh, programs, um, buildings to, um, uh, vacations, uh, the town has to, uh, spend money. Um, two thousand and ten was my first budget, it was thirty-nine million, nine-hundred-and-ninety-nine thousand. This year, the budget was forty-eight thousand, two-hundred, that's less than a million dollars a year since I've been mayor. Uh, we've utilized a number of different strategies to make that happen, uh, with a lot of help from other people within town government, we've created new revenue centers, we've redesigned, become more efficient, uh, we're a leader in energy efficiency across the state, and, uh, we've saved, saved millions of dollars already with our solar farm and our efficiency programs. The last question was, why do we have a tax rate, or?
Nope, no mention of tax rate, just about sewer water bill and financial trouble.
Okay, we have no financial trouble.
Thank you for answering his questions.
Thank you.
Councilor Ellis?
Yes, um, I appreciate what you said about the, uh, report that you're having the police chief do. I'm hoping, I was hoping that you would, so thank you, and.
You're welcome.
I'm, I'm hoping that, um, when he does come back with that report, and if in fact it does require excess staffing, extra staffing, um, that we could have that discussion, but that we could do it in executive session, given the nature, I believe it's an exec, it's able to be done in executive session, since it has to do with this, uh, safety and security, I'm pretty sure, we can check to make sure. But as a counselor, um, I think that I would personally like to be able to, to have some questions answered about what we do here in Greenfield, not so that I can relay those answers to anybody, but so that I can say with, um, certainty that I know that what we're doing is, is on a path that we need to be on, because we all know that there's a path that we need to take, and it's different than any path that anyone, anywhere was on before. So, I'm hoping that you'll take that, um, and in the next few months or next month, if we could, um, review what the plans, not, maybe not specifically the plans, but what it would take for us to get to where that report indicates we need to be.
Good point, I'll do that.
I think that was it.
Vice President Ricketts, thank you.
Um, yeah, I want to thank Councilor Ellis, because that's one thing I was going to bring up, and I was actually going to bring it up when school committee came forward. Um, none of the schools that have come in contact with violence thought it was going to be their school, so I am so happy to hear that you've already begun this conversation, and I fully agree, executive session, just so we know what's going on, you know, in a way that we feel safe if someone tells us, we're not going to share the news, but it is good to know. Um, the parking garage, you know, thank you for throwing out that figure, two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, I was going to do three-hundred-and-five thousand.
I'll withdraw mine.
We'll see what council does. And then, I sat on the first meeting tonight of the John Sun Community Center, and though I didn't bring it up there, I received an email about that not being on the F R T A route, and I just wondered if you knew anything about that, are you going to speak to them, or should I speak to them separately, and do you think that will be in the works?
Yeah, I'll, I'll check with Hope, I didn't realize that, I thought, um, in our discussions last summer, actually, that F R T A was going to that site, so I'll check with Hope tomorrow and, and see if she's had any updates on, on F R T A transportation. Um, thank you for reminding me, I had it here, but I forgot. Um, I want to open up, uh, on March second, that's a Friday, from four to six, uh, for the city councilors to, um, uh, walk through the ninety-nine percent finished, uh, senior center, senior community center, and, um, ask questions and just walk around the place, and we won't have a, a lot there for refreshments, but, uh, people will be able to come and go through. On Saturday, March third, there'll be a open house for the community from eleven A M to four P M, and there'll just be open door, people can come and go, uh, and, and see the community center. The following week, the, um, council on aging will be moving from the Weldon to the, uh, senior, the community center. J Z is easier to remember than senior community.
And my last piece of business is, you know, when we're in budget mode, we're going through things, very often as we're cutting the budget or doing whatever it is, different department heads will say, you know, and I'll be coming back to you later for X Y Z. We kind of hear it, but it's not something we write down and keep forever, so that's why I think the communication has to come through again months later, because it's true, I do believe Director Willett probably brought it up a couple times, but it was also on top of all those other figures we were working on at the time, so I just wanted to point out again that the communication piece before resident calls is perfect, so.
We try to put everything on the website first, so that, you know, people can, uh, take access and, and read a report or a, a press release. Um, I think, uh, there's some lessons to be learned there, and, uh, we may have to hire Counselor Stumpel to be our communications director. We did notify her, and she didn't notify anybody after that. No, joking.
Anything else? Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Um, oh, I said thank you.
Oh, thank you.
And communications from GSET Board of Commissioners and/or GSET Director. It's going to be the GSET Director.
Good evening, councilors.
Good evening.
Can you hear me? So I'm John Lunt, I'm the acting general manager of GSET, um, I'm here to give my monthly report. I can say that, uh, this month, we will complete our fifth straight month of, uh, increases over the previous month, previous month, excuse me, and, uh, beating the budget that we laid out, four out of five of those months, we've had double-digit percentage increases in sales. We're now well over three-hundred customers served in Greenfield, and I just want to take a second to, uh, recognize some really hard work that's been done by the staff at GSET, both the people you see out on the streets, splicing in, uh, access points, and the people who are working in the office, they're working very hard, and they are really seeing a lot of success in expanding. So I'm John Lunt. I'm the acting general manager of G-SET. Um, I'm here to give my monthly report. I can say that, uh, this month we will complete our fifth straight month of, uh, increases over the previous month, previous month, excuse me, and, uh, beating the budget that we laid out. Four out of five of those months, we've had double-digit percentage increases in sales. We're now well over three hundred customers served in Greenfield and I just want to take a second to, uh, recognize some really hard work that's been done by the staff at G-SET, both the people you see out on the streets, splicing in, uh, access points and the people who are working in the office. They're working very hard and they are really seeing a lot of success in expanding out the network faster than it has ever expanded before. So we're working right now, uh, in the Ferrante Avenue Oakland, uh, street area up in the northern part of town. We expect to be finished with that with a large section of Silver Street, uh, within the next several weeks. Um, then we're anticipating moving down. There's also, we're working down in the Hillside Park in Devon Street area. You can see trucks outrunning by Roptic Cable, uh, and we'll be moving down there. Uh, we are on track to finish the core build-out. What we had said was the core part of the town will be finished by the end of May and we will do that. Um, at the same time, uh, we're working hard to, uh, keep expenses down. We have completed, um, a budget for the balance of this fiscal year and we have our first draft of next year's fiscal year budget set to go. We've had a review of every line item expense that we have in G-SET. Um, our, the budget that we're looking for is about a thirty-six percent reduction to the, the last draft budget that I saw for the next year coming up. So we're trying to work hard on both ends of the equation to make sure that we can move G-SET towards profitability as quickly as we can. Uh, importantly, this month, um, in accordance with, uh, Mass General law one sixty-four and the governor's special order, the Board of Commissioners was sworn in at G-SET. You may have seen that in the paper. We've had, uh, our first organizational meeting. Uh, the board is, uh, Tim Farrell, Jennifer Stromston, John Howell, David Russell, and David Lenoy. We had our organizational meeting and Mr. Farrell was, uh, elected chair, Ms. Stromston was elected vice chair, and Mr. Howland was elected secretary. Uh, and, uh, they will take over the governance and oversight function of G-SET per chapter one sixty-four. Um, I want to address one final issue with you. It's my understanding that at the chairs meeting this month, there was, uh, questions and a general agreement that there needed to be, uh, an opinion sought from attorneys about the process of transferring to, uh, an enterprise fund. Um, I want to apologize to Counselor Stempel and the rest of the Ways and Means group that met just before this. I got the opinion right in the middle of that meeting. Um, so while you were talking and discussing, I was trying to read through it and I came to the conclusion that there are enough questions that it raised and it came so late, there was no time for councilors to look at it at all. Uh, importantly, there was no time for the commissioners to look at it at all. There are questions that need follow-up. They, they can all be answered, but I feel like, given some of the conversations tonight, I would like to ask that we take the time to follow up with people, write things up appropriately, communicate it to you well and communicate it to you in advance so you have some time to think about it. And the Board of Commissioners needs to have some time to review it and think about it too. So I want to recommend to you that motions seven and eight tonight regarding the, uh, tran, the creation of an enterprise fund and the transfer of assets and infrastructure into that enterprise fund be tabled until next month so you can see the information that's here. It raises some questions that may be minor or may not between conflicts between DLS guidance, uh, that we all know and have accepted and, um, issues of one sixty-four and chapter one sixty-four. So I feel like we would be rushing and that you would be working with imperfect information. And I also feel like the commissioners need to have a chance to see this and weigh in on it as well. So my recommendation to you would be to table those motions until next month and we will make sure that well in advance of the next meeting, you get good communication from us as to what we found out about this and what our recommendations are.
Vice President Ricketts?
Thank you, John, for that information. I'm glad. It will be smart to table it. I have two quick questions for you.
Sure.
Are you still in the, um, planning board office as G-SET?
We are. We move back tomorrow morning to three twenty-four.
Oh, it's bummer. I was going to say, are we getting ahead because we don't have to pay or do you, do we, did we still have to pay to hold our space?
No, no, we don't pay if we're not in occupancy.
Perfect. And then my last question is, have you had any nonprofits come to you at all for the service? I just wondered how you were able to handle it if it happened.
Uh, no, but that's more because the, the kind of product, the small business product that we would use for nonprofits has only recently become ready. We've been very focused on residents so far. Um, I would say I think that's appropriate and we should continue that. Um, most of the nonprofits that operate are along Main Street and as you know, that's a, that, that pilot program still needs to be switched over. So not as of yet. Sure.
Counselor Sun?
Yes, uh, John, I, I, I appreciate you having an open office so people can come in and talk to you, uh, about anything as far as G-SET goes.
Sure. Well, absolutely. Anyone is welcome to come see me anytime.
Counselor Mayo?
Hi, uh, in your last, uh, mention of, of your build-out, uh, I think you mentioned Devon Street and, uh, Hillside Park?
Yes, that general area.
Does that include, does that include, and I'm speaking, uh, I'm asking you a question. A resident asked me, so, um, does that include, uh, Beach, Beach Street?
I, I believe so. I, let me check and make sure and get back to you. I'm almost positive that it does.
Okay.
But just off the top of my head, let me follow up with you. I think it does.
You'll be very happy. Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Counselor Stempel?
Okay, so I'm confused because we knew that there was an opinion coming and we have an opinion in our packet and it seems to answer all the questions that Counselor Isaac had proposed. So, um, I feel a little shaky because we did assume that that was our, our, um, proposal from the town attorney. Um, so what in addition to the opinion we received on February twelfth, does this opinion?
Right. I, I don't blame you for being confused. I actually find this opinion a little confusing myself. Um, I wasn't expecting to see this today. And what it raises is issues, um, discrepancies between DLS guidance and, um, what is mandated under the authority of chapter one sixty-four. So, uh, in addition, it talks about, um, the senior deputy commissioner of DLS, who was the one who, um, put out the guidance, uh, and how he has now since followed up with some towns and said he would like to talk to people individually because he calls it a, uh, DLS understands that this is a novel area of municipal finance. So again, I apologize. I wasn't expecting to receive it and I got it right in the middle of the Ways and Means committee meeting and I just felt that we shouldn't rush ahead without people having a chance to, to review it. So I will make this available to all of you. I, I literally saw the, the hard copy tonight.
Were we expecting a second opinion?
I wasn't. So there were a number of opinions that came through. I thought the opinion that, uh, was, I, I believe the one you're referring to, please correct me if I'm wrong, is the one that, that makes a clear distinction between the governance function of an MLP and the, um, uh, method of accounting that an MLP may choose to use. I thought that's the one I have too. This raises a few questions about that, that again, uh, without reading you the whole thing, which I think is not what to do here. Um, I think those questions can all be answered, but there are enough that, that you should see at first and the Board of Commissioners should see at first. And I've spoken with the finance director and we can, um, table it until next month if you choose to do so without damage. And I just think that's a wiser course of action. Yes, I agree. Sure.
Counselor Dolan?
I agree. I think that's a reasonable course of action. Um, I am a little concerned just because the first opinion seemed so cut and dry, um,
Right.
the way that the town attorney kind of phrased it. If that first opinion is from the town attorney, where did the second opinion come from? Who's?
The town attorney.
Uh,
So, uh,
The same person and are we hearing twice?
What it does is, will that... Adam, um, let me clarify that because I coordinate with the town attorney. Uh, the first opinion was in response to Counselor Mas's question at committee chair. The second opinion was the town attorney doing further due diligence and he thought it was necessary to provide further guidance to the town before proceeding so we would do a better job in communicating with the council, but also make sure that we're heading in the right direction. So it was him doing due diligence. He communicated that to me this afternoon. The opinion came later today. That's why I was recommended to staff to recommend tabling. But our town attorney is doing extra due diligence in addition to all his other duties. So I thought it was necessary to come up to, uh, report that to you regarding the work of Gordon Quinn.
Counselor Gilmore?
I just want to know, um, since this is available now, are we going to see this in our emails tomorrow so that we can kind of go over it and have a long time sort of?
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
Counselor Ellis?
Thank you, Madam President. Can you tell us, uh, I know you, in the past, you've given us little packets with cute little graphs and whatnot, which, thank you for not giving us one of those, but
You're very welcome.
can you, can you tell us where you are financially from the standpoint of when you took over, uh, there was a certain amount of money left from the money that was given to, the five million that was given to G-SET?
Mm-hmm.
And at that time, there was a current burn rate?
Yes.
And I'll remember exactly what it was, but it was astronomical. And I believe sitting here tonight, we probably wouldn't have had any money left had you not come into the picture after everything that happened. So tonight, you say we have three hundred customers that we serve now. How much revenue is that and how much, uh, how much of the operating costs is that revenue covering and on a percentage? Not specifically, but just general?
Sure. No, I understand. Um, three hundred customers is just shy of twenty thousand dollars a month. Um, we are currently not covering our, our burn rate. Uh, it is about somewhere in between thirty-five and forty percent lower than it was previously. Um, that was, um, a pretty significant reduction and there is a certain amount, uh, a minimum that you need to actually run the operation. Um, we are not making money. We are, uh, still using up, um, money that was, um, uh, laid out in the initial bond. Our projections show that we will be able to turn to profitability before we exhaust all the resources that are available to G-SET.
Well, that's a, a good thing, I think.
Yes, I would agree.
Uh, I think, I'd just like to say a, a general comment that, um, having had to go through all of the stuff that we went through with G-SET and, I don't want to rehash it, but we went through a lot of things. Um, it's, it's good that there is someone, you, who comes before us every month and this was one of the things that came out of all of that that happened. And I'm glad that you come every month and you take the questions and you, one thing I like about you, John, is that when you don't have the answer, you tell us you don't have it, you'll get it instead of making something up.
Sure.
So I like that. So thank you for that. And also, um, I'm glad that you're moving back into your offices.
Yeah.
My question is with the reduction in force that took place, uh, are we stuck in a lease there or could we in fact, could you in fact find a smaller location that was less expensive? I don't know how much it is. Maybe it's very inexpensive. I'm not sure. But I just, I do know that when I was there, the last time I was there, there was not the reduction in force. There was all those people and it's a big space. I just didn't know if there's a space that would work better or if that space.
Uh, we're currently under lease for, uh, until twenty nineteen.
Bummer. Well, thank you for, uh, giving us those updates and, um, thank you, Madam President.
Counselor Stempel?
I mean, I, I did this math with the total population of Greenfield and that doesn't make sense. Do you know the market size of, and like what three hundred customers, so three hundred households, out of the market size of what percentage of that?
Uh, sure. Uh, the market size in Greenfield, it varies depending on who you ask. There are about sixty-five to sixty-seven hundred total households in Greenfield. That's both in the core area. That's every household within the borders of the municipality.
Okay. And is your rollout plan based on, um, capturing like, so we're going to capture this part of market share? Like how, like when you say rollout plan, what are, what are those APIs that you're trying to hit?
Uh, sure. Um, two different things. The first portion of it is simply to provide coverage in all areas and, and build out coverage to, starting in the core area. Our goal for uptake rate for customers is thirty percent. And there are areas where we've hit that and beyond and new areas where we're not there yet, but
Okay. So thirty percent of that market are the, the neighborhood, so to speak, your coverage area? And it's those blue
Yeah. Mm-hmm. Our, our initial goal, correct, the, the sort of aqua blue areas that are lit up. Our initial goal is to, um, before the end of the next fiscal year, have somewhere around fifteen hundred residents or households, excuse me.
And that's, um, and how, at, at, by May, what is the build-out percentage of the market share?
It should be somewhere in between seventy-five and eighty percent.
Cool. Thank you.
Okay.
Counselor Pytham?
Just one thing. I just want to congratulate you on all the hard work that you've done and your, the customers that you're reeling in and your sales. Um, that's, that's a huge thing, you know, coming from something so small and, and building it up to be something big. I hope it gets huge. Um, and the second question, well, the question I have is how is your marketing strategy? Every once in a while I'll see like a small thing in the newspaper or something.
Sure.
How are you reaching out more to the residents?
Right. Uh, first of all, uh, thank you for saying that. I think the credit really goes to the people working at G-SET. They, they've done a tremendous job. Um, secondly, we have begun advertising more in the paper. We're very active on social media. Um, we are, uh, increasingly working, um, with groups around town, going to speak at meetings. Um, there's a lot more we can do. We continue to do direct marketing pieces that we're allowed to hang on people's doors. We're not allowed as a municipality to actually put things in people's mailboxes. So we rely, since it's a pretty tight market area, pretty prescribed market area, we, um, work on the most direct targeted marketing we can. Every time we light up an area, we send someone out to place hand tags, hang tags, pardon me. Um, we are beginning to do, uh, a good job with, um, email. Uh, we use MailChimp and, uh, try to keep in touch with current customers and let them know about our great options. So we're trying to be pretty direct and targeted in our marketing with people.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
And now we'll have communications from the superintendent of schools and school committee.
Sure. Hi.
Hello?
Um, before I jump in, I do want to say, just kind of expand on what the mayor, um, started to talk about. For those of us who have a heightened awareness today to student safety and community safety overall, I wanted to let you know and the public know that the superintendent had already initiated, um, emergency preparedness meetings between, um, in, in coordination with the Greenfield, um, police chief, the fire chief, and the school resource officer, as well as Mayor Martin. Um, so my understanding is that, uh, those meetings will be taking place very soon. Um, as well, the superintendent is reviewing our safety and security protocols right now during vacation week. Um, and I will let her elaborate as much as she wants on that. Um, as far as the school committee goes, we've had a lot going on. Um, the full committee has met twice since the last council meeting. The first meeting was for a budget development workshop. Um, and our second meeting was our regular meeting. Our subcommittees have met several times. Um, our budget subcommittee has met to deliberate on the FY nineteen budget. Um, there's more deliberation forthcoming at the subcommittee level as well as the full committee level. Uh, we have scheduled for next Wednesday, February twenty-eighth, a full presentation of the FY nineteen draft budget as it currently exists, um, as well as a public hearing. That's at six thirty PM right here in this room. Our final bu, uh, budget vote for the FY nineteen budget is scheduled for March seventh. Um, if there are any members of the public who are not able to attend the public hearing, please feel free to submit your comments in writing and we can read them aloud and, um, add them to the public record. Um, our personnel negotiation subcommittee has workshopped and, uh, deliberated on superintendent calls and the evaluation process. Uh, there's ongoing deliberation related to a There's ongoing deliberation related to a potential human resources MOU, as well negotiations with our cafeteria workers are underway. Our policy subcommittee will meet next week to review our legislative representative policy. This is policy BJ. And the group will be discussing how the committee may want to proceed in selecting and engaging a legislative representative. This could be a member of the public, so if there are any folks that are interested in representing the Greenfield Public Schools at a state level or even beyond, please do be in touch. And we will keep you all informed as to the process for that. And last but not least, our health and safety facilities subcommittee had a long discussion on drop-off and pickup and transportation. Of course, there was no resolution yet. That conversation continues. And Secretary Alexander wanted me to let everyone know that there are a couple of fundraising opportunities for our schools. We have Dining for a Cause at the Newton Elementary School, or pardon, for the Newton Elementary School at the 99 Restaurant. That'll be on March 14th, as well on March 15th from 6 to 9 PM at GCTV. The Greenfield High School Band will be holding a telethon. So please keep all of that in mind and I'll hand over the mic to the superintendent.
Good evening. I would like to begin by joining my colleagues across the nation that are paying tribute to students that were lost in Florida and to staff that were lost defending students on a day that they should have been teaching classes. We are sitting here tonight in the Greenfield High School cafeteria. As the superintendent of the Greenfield Public Schools, I want you to know that there's nothing more important to me than the safety of our students and our staff. We care about this every day, we think about this every day. And it shouldn't take a national tragedy for people to think about keeping our children safe. And here in Greenfield, we've been talking about and thinking about this for a very long time. But we use this as an opportunity to review, to see how we can enhance and to continue to collaborate with the chief of police, with the fire chief, with the town, with our SROs. We also need to think about prevention and how the work that we do in schools to educate and make children feel safe, not just physically safe, but psychologically safe, how important that work is. At our last school committee meeting, two students sat at this table where we're sitting tonight and they spoke about the culture in Greenfield High School. And what they spoke about was the fact that Greenfield High School students support one another, rally around one another, celebrate the diversity of the students in this building and care for and celebrate those differences and encourage each other to, to succeed and excel. That's the culture and climate that we're building here in Greenfield. We want to continue to build on that. We thank you for your support of the safety and the success of our students and our staff and we'll continue to make it our topmost priority to keep every single person in this school community safe every day. The draft budget of the superintendent's budget has been released. We really look forward to public comment on this, to input on this. And you'll notice that some of the very few new positions that have been recommended do in fact address these areas. Of course, this budget was released well before this and what we're talking about are school psychologists, behavioral supports, the kinds of preventative measures that we know our schools desperately need to support and strengthen what we're already doing well and to continue to deliver a high level of academic excellence. I would like to talk about one way that the schools and the town interface. And in fact, I saw some of you there and this was through the recreation department and the winter carnival recently. I would like to publicly acknowledge the work of the recreation department and to thank the recreation department for always involving the schools in this event. Our Title I, a number of our student groups, our art exhibit. This was a great event, it was fun to see some folks out there. We had a great tug-of-war on Beacon Field. We did have a little snow. It was seventy-five today, so it's hard to remember that earlier this month it was snowing and it will be again tomorrow. It was a great event and great to collaborate with the town. I do want to also acknowledge that the day before February vacation, we received, we handed out three Excellence in Teaching Awards to fantastic teachers here in the Greenfield Public Schools. These are the Grin spoon awards. We had the pleasure of celebrating in front of their students and their classrooms, three teachers in Greenfield who go above and beyond every day. I'd like to publicly name those, those folks. Ms. Clark, music teacher at Federal Street School, was surprised in the middle of a band lesson. Ms. Rancourt, a grade four teacher at the Four Corner School, got a hug from her entire class, I'm pretty sure. When we surprised her and her principal and I were there to greet her with balloons and her class couldn't have been more overjoyed. And Ms. Angela Mast, math teacher here at Greenfield High School. I think she was sternly giving an assignment when we walked in. Her class was glad that we had a little break and we got to celebrate her. These are amazing teachers, they represent the best of Greenfield. And we want you to know, we have terrific teachers here every day doing a great job and we thank you for your support of our schools.
Any questions?
Could I add one last thing? There's a lot of discussion tonight about how to keep the community informed. This is something that's very challenging to do, we've talked about it a lot in the schools. One thing that we've done very recently... She's well-informed back there. She's good at communicating. We've added a subscribe feature on our website, so if you're interested in news or calendar events, you can go right on our homepage and click on which schools you'd like to know about and then it just is delivered to your inbox. If you're interested in just knowing when new content is added to our website for some of the same reasons you talked about earlier, you can now click that and we'll get emailed to you so you don't have to go back and check.
Counselor Lobit?
Could you explain to me and to the rest of people here, just what is the high school or the other schools doing for security to protect our students?
Right now, we're reviewing all of our protocols because it seems to me that in schools all across the nation, they have felt that they are doing everything and still tragedy has struck. We're doing a lot and I think in Greenfield you should feel very assured that we take it seriously and it's on a number of levels. This starts from responsive classroom training at the elementary level, from security protocols, from swipe cards at our entrances, from video surveillance at the doors, school resource officers training, lockdown procedures, our school resource officers coming through, coordination, as I mentioned, at the school and the town in terms of emergency response. It's really a coordinated response, it's not any one thing. And people always think about what happens after something difficult happens, but it's as much what happens before, the culture and the climate, that when something happens in a building, you want those children to immediately report to a trusted staff. And that's the kind of climate, that's what we hear here in Greenfield, is that children come forward to a trusted adult and they say, "You know, I would like to ask somebody to check something out." And most often, the last time there was a big rumor at the, at the, at the high school, it was because there were new instruments coming into the high school and kids were excited about it and that was the big rumor. But somebody reported it, anyone, and so checked it out and it turned out to be, the big excitement was new instruments coming into the high school. So we have a kind of a culture here where if somebody is concerned, it's to see something, say something, and that is in place.
Another question is, is what about all the doors? If somebody goes out, or a lot of times kids will sneak out, teachers sneak out to go to the bank, to go whatever they have to go to. They'll put a wedge in the door. How do you determine if there's a door open somewhere in the building?
Again, I think it's, I can't say enough, it's very important for us right now to review any, any kind of possible opportunity like that for, for a breach of safety. And so we're reviewing that. Clearly, our protocol is to lock and keep secure all of our doors while students are in the building and that includes staff, that includes students, and with entry protocols at all of our doors.
That, that's true. We had that at, when I was at the schools at Gateway. Teachers still went out, kids went out, they put wedges in there and they had no way of knowing who was, that that door was open. Maybe an alarm system on the door or a little light that could be in the, in the main office or, or to monitor if a door is open. The other thing is, is key cards. If people, once the school is locked up, once everybody's in the school, in their classrooms and everything, if anyone wants to approach or leave for some reason, a teacher has to do something or a class goes out on a, a field trip or something like that and they come back or for any other reason, they have a key card and they use that, they have to use it at the front door. That's the only way they can get in. Then you also have a, a camera there so you know who's there or who's coming in. But nobody else can get in through that door, a teacher, visitor, anything. A visitor would have to answer on your intercom to the office and statewide are there and who they want to see and... I'm just saying, these are good things they have. I'm also going to say that it might be a good idea if schools start thinking about hiring retired officers, police officers, retired army personnel that are really trained in this kind of thing. A retired armor, army person or police would love to have a job like that to, to, to help with their, their retirement and everything. And I really, Israel has done that. They had a lot of problems over there with, with people sneaking in and all that, killing kids at one time. Soon as they, they went to that system, they haven't had one incident since then. And it works. And I'm just, these are suggestions. And I think that's probably the only way you're really going to protect everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice President Ricketts?
Well, I'll say, my daughter works at the Greenfield Middle School and I go over to give her something or I need to speak to her for a moment and I'm not getting in at all until someone buzzes me in. I still need a visitor pass, she has to come and get me. It's really secure and I really want to name drop and just get in there and it does not work. So, I'm telling you, they, it is strict, it is tough to get in.
Yeah, I'm not saying it doesn't work, but there's always that possibility that another door is open or that somebody, that, that door doesn't close all the way. And e- extra security is what I'm saying.
Counselor Stempel?
I just wanted to say, I don't know, for some reason this has really, this, I mean, I can't say that this is just the one, but for some reason, maybe I'm thirty-one and I'm old enough now to really retain it. But I was just listening to NPR that next morning, having to hear the mayor of that community and, and how he was just like, he was incomprehensible. You couldn't even understand what he was saying to the reporter. I was like, wow, how put together is this man? The day after seventeen students and, and staff, people who worked for him were gunned down. And so I want to just say that I have full faith that you will leave every, you will leave no stone unturned. I, I think John has some good suggestions, but I think doing another look at everything that we have available to us. And I want to thank you for doing that.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to motions, orders, and resolutions. Counselor Stempel, this is you.
I got this, we're people too. This is what we talk about, being full circle and being candid and transparent and when things suck, they suck. And I guess I just feel comfortable letting things suck in front of the people here tonight. Anyway, thank you for bearing with me. The town council moved that it be ordered, that the, excuse me, the Greenfield Town Council take from the table, order number FY18053, that it be ordered upon recommendation of Mayor Martin in order to repurpose $529,271.23 from excess funds borrowed from pay expenses incurred for damage caused by Hurricane Irene, ordered that, the sum of $529,271.23 to be reassigned from the excess funds of the Hurricane Irene bond to the parking garage capital project, which was tabled at the January 17th, 2018 town council meeting.
Okay, this is a non-debatable motion and so if you vote yes, you are voting to take this motion off the table and then it'll be off the table, we can discuss it again. If you vote no, then it just means it stays on the table and we're going to do a roll call. Counselor Sun? Counselor Lobit? Counselor Alice?
Yes.
Counselor Pytham?
Yes.
Counselor Roman?
Yes.
Counselor Gilmore? Counselor Wheeler?
Yes.
Counselor Nail?
Yes.
Counselor, Vice President Ricketts?
Yes.
Counselor Stempel?
Yes.
The motion passes and Counselor Stempel, could you please read the motion again? Because that's what we're going to be debating, discussing now.
I'm more than happy to read it again. Motion on a, oh, what is...
After the word tabled?
I see, okay. That it be ordered upon recommendation of Mayor Martin in order to repurpose $529,271.23 from excess funds borrowed for paying expenses incurred for damage caused by Hurricane Irene, ordered that, the sum of $529,271.23 to be reassigned from the excess funds of the Hurricane Irene bond to the parking garage capital project.
Second. Is, so, is there any discussion?
I just wanted to say that we, the way that we maneuvered it in committee was, we didn't talk about tabling or anything like that. So once we moved past that, the vote, the recommendation that occurred was a majority negative of a three to two vote. There was some discussion about other purposes for the money. There was some other discussion about what is needed for the building versus what is not needed for the building. And so I, it's a, it's a committee of five, so we were essentially split down the middle.
Thank you, Counselor Ellis?
Thank you, Madam President. I was one of the no votes for a variety of reasons. I think that the project, so starting from the beginning, I believe that the project was said to be a ten million dollar project. We needed, we need to live within our budgets. When we make a budget, we need to live within it. I understand that there are things that come up. A lot of the numbers, to me, didn't make a lot of sense. We had a lengthy discussion at Ways and Means, I'm not going to get into all of the points from Ways and Means. The, the project hit some, hit some, some snags where they needed contingency money. We talked about it last month. We got some backup between last meeting and this meeting. And the, I think the bottom line is that the project is $138,000 over budget. And there are some things that could be taken out of this project. I call them frills, I didn't, we can call them whatever we want. We can call them features, whatever you want to call them. They're things that only serve to make the building look good. They don't serve a functional purpose, they don't serve a purpose of necessity. And we heard tonight, we heard last month it was three hundred thousand, we heard this month it was two hundred and twenty-five thousand. I'm going to offer an amendment to, to strike the $529,271.23 and insert two hundred and fifty thousand in hopes, reluctantly I will offer it because I, I think that we need to live within our, our means when we set a budget, we should live with that. However, I do understand that there are times that things happen. So I will reluctantly offer that in a minute. I believe that the mayor offered us to be included in the weekly updates of the project and I think that that would be something that I would want to make a caveat of, of proving any money. Just as we've seen, and I'm not saying this is a GSET, I'm saying just as we saw with GSET, when we became more active in a role of oversight of expenditures, we ended up with Mr. Lunt, who's been doing a great job in giving... us the information that we need on a monthly basis. And I don't see why we shouldn't do that on a $10 million project. We probably should have done that from the beginning, but we're not going to go backwards. We'll go forwards. Um, I would also like to know before I vote, and it will be up to you to allow this to happen, um, I'd like to know what those things are specifically that will be excluded from what they say they're going, what, what they would put in the frills or the, the, um, the features. I'd like to know specifically what they are so that we can just verify that those, those things have, um, if they can be put in with, within the 10 million, great. Then I think that we should, um, put in whatever we can with the 10 million. But if it's going to be over the 10 million, I'd like to know what it is that's being cut out so that we know it's actually being cut out. Um, so if you'd like, I'll offer the amendment now. If you want me to wait, that's fine.
I think now is good.
Okay. So then I would like to make an amendment that after the word repurpose, we delete 529,271.23 and insert the number 250,000.
Um, just one, um, no, you'd, you'd want it, you'd also want that second.
Oh, and in both places.
In both places.
I'd like to do that in both places, please. I didn't see the second one, sorry.
Yeah, that's okay. And then we have a second. Um, so now we, the, the motion on the floor that we were talking about is to have $250,000 from excess funds, um, from Hurricane Irene to be reassigned to the parking garage capital project. So it's $250,000. That's what we are debating and, um, Counselor Stempel?
Um, so I, I'm all for compromise to get something done. And so that's what this is, is a compromise in order to get something done. Um, but when you look at the numbers, we're 1.3% over on this project with all the mayhem that's happened that was unforeseeable. Um, that is ridiculously good. Um, and so we as counselors sit here and, and we also have, um, town department heads and, and everyone at our disposal to give us the information that we need. And I think they do a damn good job doing it. Um, so my frustration through this process is a continual narrative. And we wonder why citizens come before us, um, saying, or, or call us even saying, what is Greenfield doing spending? It's because we have counselors who sit before the community saying that we are irresponsible or, or what have you. And 1.3% over on a $10 million project that is as substantial as building into the ground and above several stories thus far, um, that is super irresponsible. Um, so I don't want it to go down and I want to make sure it's in the record that this is not anything irresponsible that the town has done. Um, yes, there was, it seems like we do have a, a process of miscommunication that I think it would behoove us to take a look at, and that's department wide, um, town office wide. Um, but when it comes to the dollars and everything else, like being the chair of Ways and Means, I've done nothing but look at numbers and meet with town department heads and try to understand where we're coming from. So I just want it to be known that this is not a result of any irresponsibility on the town's behalf. This is just construction and everything else. And so I'm happy to compromise on this, um, because it's irresponsible to have no contingency on a project like that. Um, and yeah, we, we said, oh, we wouldn't come back to the taxpayers. Essentially, no, we're not. Um, let's be responsible. Let's move this forward. We can't talk about it anymore.
Counselor Dolan?
First of all, I would like to say, um, there was a lot of confusion with the numbers when we first looked at this last month. And, um, it was particularly confusing for those of us who are new counselors, I think, and new to municipal finance. Um, but I would like to communicate to the mayor that we are definitely going to, this council is definitely going to hold you accountable and demand transparency as projects like this go forward. Um, that said, I want to echo what, what Counselor Stempel said. Um, prices do go up and sometimes you find things in the ground that you did not anticipate. So I don't, I feel like this project is actually going fairly well. It's very close to the budget, like you said, 1.3%. Um, I wasn't part of the original conversation about this parking garage. Um, I don't know how I would have voted on it, but I do feel as someone who worked in the building trades for many years, that it's important when you're doing a project to do it right the first time and not wait and possibly add something later. I mean, what we're talking about for these so-called frills is a minute part of the budget for a project that will pay for itself in the long run. And, um, personally, I don't want an ugly brutalist concrete structure in our historic downtown. I would like something that is designed well to fit into our urban space and to fill, you know, a visual space that is really one of our assets as a town. So, um, I would also like to echo Counselor Stempel. I think there's a lot of showboating about constantly, um, cutting every single possible dollar. And I would like to reframe the conversation as what are our priorities as a town? And for me, completing this project and making sure that it's done well is a priority. So I will, I'm happy to compromise on this, but, um, I think it's very important to have that projects like this have contingencies. And, um, for me, this is very much a compromise I would have liked to have approved of the
Counselor Gilmore?
Um, I am also a little bit concerned about the amendment because I'm, I, I, I feel like I was starting to get a handle on what 529,000 was going to purchase, but I don't know what $250,000 is going to get. And if it's just contingency funds, I'm concerned that if they find something else or, I don't know, there could be a tornado or an earthquake. I don't know what that, how far that's going to get us. So now I feel like we have less information with this number than we did with the original
Counselor Wheeler?
Um, so my question is actually, um, if we do vote this amendment forward, what are the other legal uses for the remaining $279,271.25? Um, because we would only be repurposing the $250,000. So that's part of my vote, obviously.
Um, the money can be used for a like project that can be borrowed for the same amount of time or longer, just like with the parking garage. It would have to come to you from the mayor to be used for any other project that is
So just following up on that.
Yeah.
Um, are there any other long-term projects that fit those specifications?
Well, without knowing what the total capital project coming forward is, there are, I don't know what's coming forward in, in March to you folks. Actually, it will be April, but it's first reading in March. Um, you know, there, there is, uh, there's a John Zahn center that could possibly, we could do that, but it is under budget at this point. Um, there could be some from the water sewer if we need to do that. It could be used for part of the capital funding when we bring forward the capital projects. So yes.
Counselor Ellis?
Yes. I'd just like to, uh, say that this, this is, this is a, an attempt to, to compromise on it in an, in an effort to make up the, the, what currently is a 1.3% difference. However, 22% has already been cut off the garage, so it's actually 23.3 total over the life of the project. So that the facts do matter. Um, so that's almost a quarter of the project. So when, when we want to, when we want to talk about the actual percentage of this project, we should talk about the whole project as a whole. Yes, this is 1.3% of, this is 1.3. Um, so with that said, the, I don't, I don't want the parking garage to stop. I don't, I, I 100% believe that if this got voted down, it wouldn't stop, but that's neither here nor there. I want to offer the 250, which was offered to me by the mayor himself tonight, said we can do 250. So, I mean, I, I take, I take him at his word. If he, if he says 250 will cover it, I, I'm hoping that the 250 will cover it, um, because the only overage is the 138,000. So that would leave the balance of that, uh, 250 as contingency. And as we were told in Ways and Means, they're 80% done with everything subterranean, sub, subterranean, if I get that right. And if I get this wrong, correct me. The only thing left subterranean, meaning in the ground, is the top four feet of soil. What the issues that they had were, were 22 feet down underneath the site. And all of that is no longer an issue because they've poured all of the, the, um, internal work, not the foundation portion, but what the foundation is going to sit on as I understand it. And those change orders were $65,000. And those were big change orders. So the balance of 250, after you take the 138, really should, if it's for contingency, should be plenty of contingency. So I just want to share that that's directly from the mayor. So that's why I offered it.
Ready to vote? Um, roll call, please. Um, Counselor Mayo?
Um, hi, I was, uh, I sat on the Ways and Means committee and I, uh, voted in full support of the requested amount, only because when you talk about a $10 million project, I don't think it was too unreasonable to, um, I mean, it was, there was a lot of unexpected things that we found or they, uh, the contractors found, but I still don't think that, uh, uh, 530 or nearly 530,000 dollars wasn't, isn't that unreasonable an amount to, uh, set aside for contingencies, uh, such as, um, uh, uh, whatever that was, stable or whatever was found. Um, and so I voted yes. But, uh, having voted yes, uh, I'd like to still see this project for, go forward. I would, uh, I would be acceptable to the, uh, the amount that the mayor suggested.
Counselor Gilmore?
Yeah, I'm, I'm still not sure if I understand what's going to happen to the remainder of the money because it sounds like this isn't necessarily something that can be repurposed for a project that we know about right now. Um, so I'm, I'm confused. What, what would happen to that money? I mean, I know a lot of the residents talked about offsetting the cost of our water and sewer, but I know that that's not possible. Um, so is it just going to sit there or what would, what would happen with it?
It will just sit there. We, we can't use it towards water sewer budget or any budget. You can only use it for a capital project. So it will sit there until we bring it forward to be voted.
New questions? Brand new questions? Counselor Stempel?
Not so much a question. I just want to make sure that everyone understands. So when we were at Ways and Means, um, it was relayed, oh, wait, questions of Director Bracha or just about this? Oh, I don't have any questions for Director Bracha. You're like, oh God, she's coming hot. Okay, thank you. I just want to, um, this is something that wasn't mentioned. It was, it was advised to us and, and it's good common practice. I'm pretty sure when I rehabbed my home, I had a 5% contingency set aside and I did use it. Um, so we were recommended to have a 5% contingency, which of a $10 million project, that'd be $500,000 of occurrence of incidents. So the 250 leaves us with $91,807 contingency, um, which, which is less than 1%. It's a zero, it's 0.91% of a contingency moving forward on the project. So not only should we vote to move this forward, but we should also say a little prayer that nothing else happens. Um, so, um, I'm uncomfortable, um, messing around with the prod, the, a project that's essentially going to carry people and cars. Um, but if that's what it takes from this council to compromise, to feel like someone's achieving and someone's winning something, then, um, I guess that's what we have to do. But again, a point 009% left over in case something happens, it's not very wise.
Are we ready to vote? I'm going to do a roll call. Yes, the vote is on the amendment. I will read it for clarification. So we're voting on, um, that it be ordered upon recommendation of Mayor Martin in order to repurpose $250,000 from excess funds borrowed for paying expenses incurred for damage caused by Hurricane Irene, ordered that the sum of $250,000 to be reassigned from the excess funds of the Hurricane Irene bond to the parking garage capital project.
Counselor Sun? Counselor Lovett?
Yes.
Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Counselor Pytham? Counselor Dolan?
Yes.
Counselor Gilmore?
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler?
Yes.
Counselor Mayo?
Yes.
Vice President Ricketts?
Yes.
Counselor Stempel?
The motion passes. And now, um, Counselor Stempel, could you read the main motion as amended?
Okay. Um, move that it be ordered that the Greenfield Town Council take, oh, never mind. Move that it be ordered, that the, move that it be ordered upon recommendation of Mayor Martin in order to repurpose $250,000 from excess funds borrowed from paying expenses incurred for damage caused by Hurricane Irene, ordered that the sum of $250,000 to be reassigned from the excess funds of the Hurricane Irene bond to the parking garage capital project.
Your second? Roll call?
Counselor Sun? Counselor Pytham? Counselor Dolan?
Yes.
Counselor Gilmore?
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler?
Yes.
Counselor Mayo?
Yes.
Vice President Ricketts?
Yes.
The motion passes in its entirety and so it is now time for Vice President Ricketts.
The town council moved that it be ordered that the Greenfield Town Council pursuant to the charter section 2-10 accepts the following appointment by the mayor to the Human Rights Commission, Sarah Hearn, for a three-year term to expire December 2021. This was a positive unanimous. I know Sarah personally and we are very lucky to have her.
Questions? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion passes.
The town council moved that it be ordered that the Greenfield Town Council pursuant to charter section 2-10 accepts the following appointment by the mayor to the local cultural commission, Andrew Nightswaner, for the three-year term to expire December 2021.
Debate? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? The motion passes.
It was positive unanimous and so were the next two. The town council moved that it be ordered that the Greenfield Town Council pursuant to charter section 2-10 accepts the following appointment by the mayor to the planning and construction committee, John Andrews, for a three-year term to expire December 2021.
Any debate? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion passes.
The town council moved that it be ordered that the Greenfield Town Council pursuant to charter section 2-10 accepts the following appointment by the mayor to the mayor's task force on domestic violence, Joanne Leonard, three-year term expiring December 2021.
Any debate? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? The motion passes. Vice, Vice President Ricketts, I think it's still you. Oh, yes, um, we're going back to Counselor Stempel.
The town council, upon recommendation of Mayor Martin, in order to rescind borrowing authorities, ordered that, upon recommendation of the mayor, the following borrowing authorities totaling 400 million, I'm... ordered that, upon recommendation of the mayor, the following borrowing authorities totaling 400 million, I'm 400 million, yeah, can we? $48,254,980 be rescinded. I love reading these. Oh, I have to read it all, right?
Please do.
Upgrade, uh, purpose. And then, the second half, I will tell you the total that will be rescinded. Upgrade school energy equipment, 25,000. FEMA Hurricane Irene, 3,867,521. High school construction, 43,594,660. Purchased lunt property, 68,271. Newton School roof, 91,500. North Parish roof, 3,029. Engineering Nash's Mill Bridge, 75,000. Replace fuel tank, 100,000. Rehab Rocky Mountain water tank, 400,000. DPW garage roof, 30,000 for grand total of 48,254,980.
And could you report on the committee?
Um, this was a positive unanimous. Uh, we think this is great, get this off of our books, um, and clean everything up.
Okay, does anybody have any, um, comments, questions, debates? All right, um, just going to call the questions and you all know what the motion is. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion passes.
Okay. Back to Ways and Means. I love this job. Is this the right one? Yes, okay. So, the Town Council, upon recommendation of Mayor Martin, in order to transfer Telecommunication Enterprise Fund, ordered that, to see if the city of Greenfield will transfer all capital items, infrastructure and assets of the G-Set Municipal Light Plant to the newly established Telecommunications Broadband Enterprise Fund. Can I move that this be tabled?
Um, somebody needs a second, and then somebody needs to make a second. And then somebody needs to make the motion table. Thank you. This is non-debatable. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Abstain? The motion is tabled. Counselor Stempel?
Aha, okay. The Town Council moved that it be ordered that the, nope, I skipped something. No, that was the first one. What page is this? Page 36. Oh, so we skipped one. Oh, so then I, I have to, I have to move to 35. So, we're going to move it back a step. Sorry, I skipped a page. Um, and the Town Council, upon recommendation, so this is FY 18064A. Um, we just did B. Yes. Um, so, the Town Council, upon recommendation of Mayor Martin. Should we, should we redo both, or? It's okay. The Town Council, upon recommendation of Mayor Martin, in order to establish a Telecommunication Broadband Enterprise Fund, ordered that, to see if the city of Greenfield will accept the provisions of Chapter 44, Section 53F1, or F, 53F1/1/10 of the Massachusetts General Law, establishing a telecommunication broadband as an enterprise fund effective July 1st of 2018.
Tabled? I heard a motion to table. I heard a second. Non-debatable. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? The motion is tabled.
Silver Crest 38? Is that you? Page 38.
Okay. Okay, this is a positive unanimous for all three. The Town Council moved that it be ordered that the city of Greenfield, known as the town of Greenfield, through its Town Council, take that by eminent domain, so much of the fee, simple interest, in Silvercrest Lane and Silvercrest Circle, as well as easements described on the attached Exhibit A, and made part of the motion for the purpose of a public way. You got to vote on them separately or you want it together? Okay, positive unanimous.
I just have a question. Um, so what would happen if we didn't?
Talk to that table over there?
I'm just, I'm just saying, like, what hap, what would hap, like, what was, what would the town, what would, so there's no... I'm just curious. It's my right to know.
Right now, they take care of their own plowing, their own, uh, I don't know if they do their own trash disposal, but they take care of the road, the plowing, everything else. By accepting it as a public way, they get all of the same services that every other public way receives.
Okay, thank you. Aye.
Aye. The Town Council moved that it be ordered that the city of Greenfield, known as the town of Greenfield, through its Town Council, accepts a quitclaim deed from Silvercrest Lane and Silvercrest Circle to the town of Greenfield and authorize the mayor and treasurer to take such other actions to accomplish the same. Positive unanimous.
I will say that you should probably vote for these as well if you voted for the first one. It's one of those things where if you don't vote for this one, you really screw up things.
Pretty much, you're right.
Aye.
The Town Council moved that it be ordered that the city of Greenfield, known as the town of Greenfield, through its Town Council, lays out and accept in Silvercrest Lane and Silvercrest Circle as a public way is described on Exhibit A, attached to this motion and made part of it. This was also a positive unanimous. Um, I'm glad that many of the residents came to the economic development meeting. I feel like this is a big step for Greenfield, and considering the taxes that they pay, this is great that they're part of the town and they really feel this. So, I really hope that everyone votes yes for this as well.
Comments? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion passes.
Welcome to Greenfield, guys. Nice to be. Um, clap.
Vice President Ricketts?
He only applause all night and it was for you guys.
They always say, "Leave on a high note."
Oh, okay, so. The Town Council moved that it be ordered that the Greenfield Town Council votes to approve the formation of the 2019 Split Tax Rate Advisory Committee for the purpose of research and discussion. The committee will consist of two counselors, two residents, and two business owners, which will be appointed by the Town Council President. This committee will expire on March 1st, 2019.
Um, I do not believe this has gone through a committee. We're just going to vote on it tonight. Does anybody have any questions? Comments? Um, Counselor Gilmore?
I just wanted to know if people have been selected already, or this is just going to establish it and then people come later?
Counselor Dolan?
And there's no cost associated with forming this to the town? These are going to be volunteer positions?
Yeah.
So, if we have names in mind, uh, could somebody give me a sense of how those names were selected?
Um, just, um, people who have reached out to the Vice President and myself. Um, and if you, if there's anybody who's interested in serving on this committee, if you would reach out to the Vice President and myself, um, that would be great. So, um, we ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion passes and committee is formed, and I need Counselor Ellis.
I'm making motion that we reserve a page in the minutes of tonight's meeting, February 21st, 2018, to be dedicated to Mr. William Budnus, a longtime retired Greenfield High School physical education teacher and former NFL Oakland Raider, and Mr. Edward Clayton, Ed Phelps, retired English teacher at Greenfield Middle School. Um, this is, uh, near and dear to me. Mr. Budnus was my, uh, gym coach, one of my favorite gym coaches. And, um, right, actually, well, not in this building, of course, but in the old high school here. He was a, uh, gym teacher here for many, many, many years. Uh, a lot of, uh, a lot of us, actually all of us, really liked him. We enjoyed his, um, his stories. He, like it says, he was in Super Bowl I. They lost. But he still had a ring, and he would bring his ring in and he'd let people wear it. And if, uh, if he didn't return it, was just not an option. Because if you knew Bill, he was huge. He was giant, so, um, and also, um, Ed was a very longtime, uh, teacher for the middle school. Unfortunately, um, Budnus, uh, suffered from CTE, which is the, uh, brain injury from playing football. So, it's unfortunate, and I hope that everyone will vote to, um, place, uh, reserve a page for each of them in, in the minutes. So, thank you.
Would anybody else like to say something? Counselor Sun?
I knew both of them. Um, Mr. Phelps, I had in school, so, um, that was just a couple of years ago. But, um, and Mr. Budnus, um, was an excellent, um, communicator, uh, uh, physical education, uh, teacher and an excellent football coach. Had a, nothing but good, uh, to give to the kids. And, um, that's what you need in school. He also coached, uh, girls softball, and, uh, he coached my son football when he was in high school here, too.
Counselor Stempel? Oh, I just wanted to echo the sentiment of Counselor Ellis. He was my gym teacher as well, and you could just do no wrong in his eyes. It was really nice and important, George, we just had Superintendent Harper share how they're building a culture of inclusion and, um, reporting and safe place. And I think everyone can say that Mr. Budnus was the guy, if you had a problem or you needed to talk something out to, like, he was the one that you would feel safe going to. And so, um, in his testament, um, I, I never even got to say thank you. So, this is, this is meaningful to me as well.
Okay. Counselor Mayo?
She always told me just to walk it off.
You're still walking it off. Still walking. Okay, all in favor? Opposed? Abstain? The motion passes. Moving on to presentation of petitions and similar papers. Do a report of committees, um, starting with, um, appointments and ordinances?
Okay, ordinarily, I always pass, but I had two meetings last week, appointments and ordinances, and EDC. And I had the new counselors on both, and, um, Counselor Gilmore, Wheeler and Doyle. And both meetings were a couple hours, but they were so great. Like, the conversation, the discussion was so rich. I really liked it. We also had Counselor Mayo and Counselor Sun in the room. And we just brought up so much stuff. Um, I don't know if the clerk's office wants to kill me for all my notes, but it was just so good and I wanted to capture as much as I can, because I don't think I got that tape running correctly at all. So, basically, people, if you could look back in your packets for the EDC meeting and the appointments and ordinances, if you have any suggestions on anything there, please send, um, Counselor Leonovich, anything from the EDC, and myself for A&amp;O. Like I said, we're going to be bringing these things up again next month, and it was a lot to cover. And we did great, the Chief of Police and the Fire Chief and DPW. Like, people came and weighed in, and we had community at the first one. So, this was so important and it was a rich discussion. So, I welcome you to counsel even more after last week. Thank you so much for everything.
Thank you. Counselor Stempel, would you like to report on Ways and Means?
Um, I think my report was everything we voted on tonight, and then it looks like we have some first readings for next month.
Okay, and, um, Counselor Mass is not here to report on CREs, so we will hear from him at the next meeting. Um, and that brings us to unfinished business. Old business. New business. Um, and Counselor Stempel, you have a couple of first readings.
Town Council first reading, February 21st, 2018. $85,000 to be appropriated from the General Stabilization Fund for the purpose of demolition of 188 Main Street. $76,000 to be appropriated from the General Stabilization Fund for the purpose of the Green Communities Grant Town Match.
Motions for reconsideration? Do we have a motion to adjourn? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? We are adjourned at 9:32. Thank you all for watching.
All of our productions at GCTV are sponsored in part by Bay State Health, providing the care you and your family need, when you need it, close to home. Visit them online at baystatehealth.org. Greenfield Savings Bank. Visit them at 400 Main Street in Greenfield. Call them at 774-3191, or go online to greenfieldsavings.com. Greenfield Community College. Providing access and excellence in higher education in the Pioneer Valley. Visit them at gcc.mass.edu. The Hammond Family. The Hammond Family are longtime supporters of Greenfield Community Television. New Fortune Chinese Restaurant, on the Mohawk Trail in Greenfield. Visit them online at newfortunema.com. Call them at 772-0838, and check them out on Facebook. Real Cleaning Services. Cleaning Hampshire and Franklin County since 1972. We don't cut corners, we clean them. Check them out online at realclean.com. Call them at 413-422-1143. Peoples United Bank. Located at 45 Federal Street in Greenfield. You can call them at 774-3713, or visit them online at peoples.com. The Solar Store of Greenfield. Replacing fossil fuels and nuclear power, one home at a time. Visit them at 23-Fisk Ave. Call them at 413-772-3122, or visit them online at solarstoreofgreenfield.com. Thank you to our sponsors for supporting all of GCTV's productions.